Good evening. I'd like to call the Water Pollution Control Authority and Regular Town Council Meeting of North Branford, Connecticut for Tuesday, March 18th, to order at 6:36 PM. Please join me in a salute to the plague. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Deputy Mayor McMillan.
President.
Counselor Abelson.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Code.
Here.
Counselor Miller.
Here.
And Counselor Nathan.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes, February 18th, 2025, WPCA and Town Council Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I have one correction, and it's on page 16 of the minutes, which is page 19 in our, on our tablet here, and it's where we talked about the $1.8 million, the Steve Grant. So there's a correction. One place it says 1.8, and then the other place it says 18 million. So we just need to move that decimal over a little bit. It's a small little correction. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Now on to the WPCA agenda. First item is correspondence regarding WPCA. Next is unfinished business, none listed, new business. First item, request to connect to sanitary sewers at 88 Caputo Road, map 30, lot 21D.
Good evening, Council. Chris Holden, town engineer. 88 Caputo Drive is in the B section of our sanitary sewer system. There is enough capacity for the lot to be connected. It is, we'll have to pay the connection fee of $12,300. Currently, it is an open lot, and they want to connect to the sanitary sewer. They will need to have land use approval prior to the connection becoming valid. So as part of the recommended ordinance or motion, it includes being, having to be approved by a town land use. So the importance is that it is able to connect to the sanitary sewer so it can get approval. But if it doesn't get approval, then this will be null and void. It won't be connected.
Okay. All right. So on page 24 of our packet is the suggested motion. Do I hear a motion to, the motion to, once we get the motion on the floor?
A moment, I'll get it for you. All right, motion as stipulated on page 24 of the packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Discussion.
Approved building lot? Were they buildings, something on them?
Yeah, there'll be a house that are building in the lot. Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next item is request to connect to sanitary sewers, 45 Ash Drive, map 74, lot 33.
This lot is in the White Hollow Sewer Area in the primary section, so it doesn't have to meet the extra stringent requirements that the secondary portion of the area needs to meet. There's an existing house that's currently on the lot, and they've already paid their assessment fee, so they just want to be able to connect to the sanitary sewer at this time, and there is capacity in the sanitary sewer for this house to connect.
The suggested motion is on page 27 of our packet.
A motion as stipulated on page 27?
Second.
Motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Abelson. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Citizen statements and petitions in regards to the WPCA. Okay, hearing none, we are going to move into the regular town council meeting. First item is under community events and presentations. Recognition of excellence for successful resuscitation awarded to the North Branford Fire, Police, and Public Works personnel for their efforts on February 11th, 2025. I think we have a few people coming up here to recognize.
Madam Mayor, on February 11th, a person driving through town had an unfortunate circumstance of having a medical emergency that caused him to go into a guardrail on Forest Road, and with the quick action of Sergeant Brian Hannan, the door was popped. In conjunction with Lieutenant Ken Ash from Company One, they pulled the gentleman out and began lifesaving measures. Other folks arrived, Connor Coyne, Kyle Cochrane, Jarrett Cacapardo. That device we showed last week, that Lucas device, was used on this, on this gentleman, and we had a successful resuscitation. We had help from our friends in the Branford Fire Department. Both of our medics were tied up on other calls, and we have folks from the Branford Fire Department. We had a great mutual aid relation. One of our animals was in their town today. We work very well together. So we have some folks that Chief Lovelace and I would like to recognize with the help of our Senator Chicarella and Representative Candelora. I thought I saw it there. Yeah, neither. So from our department, the fire department, we had Deputy Chief Robert Colangelo, who happens to be working tonight, Lieutenant Kyle Cochrane, Jarrett Cacapardo, who's flying somewhere over New York right now, and Connor Coyne. From the North Branford Police Department, I'll let Jimmy introduce.
We got Sergeant Brian Hannan here with his family. We have Director Fran Marolla here as well.
And from our friends in the Branford Fire Department, we have paramedic Eletherios John Terrace. How do I do? Pretty good. Goes by Teddy. EMT Andrew Rafile and EMT Andrew Seward. So again, the gentleman, Mark Pola, had all intentions of being here tonight to actually hand these awards personally to the gentleman. He wasn't feeling 100% today, so there'll be another situation where he will come and meet you guys, police and fire, and Branford folks on a one-on-one basis. But he and the family were extremely grateful for your actions, as all the citizens of North Branford should be proud of the teamwork that we have that results, as I mentioned last week, in saving lives. How, how much better can you be than saving someone's life? I mean, it's the ultimate goal. Many of the calls we go on, as you guys all are aware, don't have positive outcomes. Sometimes we don't know the outcomes. This one was a gentleman that was released from the hospital, which counts as a save. So we have some plaques locally, and I'll turn it over to the representative and senator if they want to jump in and do their part.
We're just here to offer our thanks and congratulations on a job well done. I, I think what makes this community, you know, unique is that you do care, you pay attention. Something like this could be overlooked, and, you know, Sergeant Hannan, your, you know, ability to identify an issue, and all of you just rising to the challenge to help an individual is something that, that we certainly appreciate, and we're just happy to be here to congratulate you. So we also have state citations that we're presenting tonight as well.
It's, it's an honor to be here. All too often, we hear about bad news, and it's so important that we recognize our brave men and women that put their life on the line, so it's an honor to be here. We rushed back from Hartford to make sure we were here to present the citations, and Mr. Hannan, your father probably would have yelled at me if I wasn't here. I missed your, your brother as you guys are competing for awards. But I just want to congratulate you guys and make sure we take the time to recognize the sacrifices you guys make to keep the community safe. It doesn't go unnoticed, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative. So as the fire chief's passing out the, the plaques is, and you know, what you'll see, the only thing that's different up here is that we have different patches on our shoulder, right? But we all come to the same scene for the same goal, and that's to have a chance at saving a life. It doesn't happen often in our career where we're, we're this successful, but it's the teamwork together of all jumping in and doing our responsibilities through our training, through the equipment purchased through the town, and then working on our, with our mutual aid partners on a, on a constant basis. These are the outcomes that we hope to deliver time and time again. So all these gentlemen up here, I think they just deserve a huge round of applause for the hard work.
Okay.
On behalf of the town council, I would like to recognize the service of Tricia Mace. This commendation is hereby given in recognition and appreciation for your dear service and contributions to our community, planning and zoning from 2016 to 2017, and then from 2017 to 2025 as a regular member. Congratulations.
Mayor Angeloni and council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to just update you. As you may recall, I did do a presentation in the fall of 2024 to kind of bring you up to speed and update you on Totucket TV and how we're doing and some of the issues, one big issue that we're facing. And if you recall back to that fall meeting, the main issue that we are facing right now that all stations like ours throughout Connecticut is funding loss because of cable TV cord cutting. As you probably will recall, every time someone drops cable TV for Netflix or Hulu or Peacock or what have you, we lose a certain amount of money per subscriber every year. And that trend obviously is not reversing. You probably hear about it every day, how cable TV losses continue with subscribers. The bulk of our funding comes through cable TV subscribers that was started back in the 70s to allow community access TV to, to grow and flourish. I manage North Haven TV, Branford TV, and Totucket TV in North Branford, three separate nonprofit community TV stations. We're all facing the same problems. In Branford, we've been able to get Mayor, I mean, First Electman Jamie Cosgrove to arrange for an increase in the funding the town gives us from 8,000 to 20,000 this coming year, for the next fiscal year, to cover that $12,000 loss that Branford TV is facing. Similar situation in North Haven. We presently get 57,000 a year, North Haven TV from the town, and they're going to be giving us an increase of probably about 10,000 to 12,000 for next fiscal year to, again, make up for that loss. In North Branford, and I'll hand this out afterwards, we're down from last year to this year about $7,200 annually in, in that funding that comes in. And that affects us a lot when our budget's only around 60,000 a year, roughly. 7,000 is, is a good chunk of that. We're obviously at 1675 Foxen Road, a town building. We were up until February paying 9,600 a year in rent through a lease with the dental office next door with the town to lease out some parking spaces. Our rent due to that was reduced from 9,600 a year to 6,600 a year. So that 3,000 certainly has helped a little bit. We do pay about 10,000 a year in utilities, oil, water, electricity. The town, of course, gives us a $13,000 a year contribution as well, which helps us, but we're nonetheless down that $7,200. And for those who don't know, we provide coverage of a lot of the town meetings that the town has requested being televised, streamed, aired on cable TV, both live and in, in replays. Through grants we've attained, we've installed hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of equipment. The PTZ cameras you see here are 10,000 each. We just installed a new $25,000 video switcher in the room next door. We have a similar setup at Stanley T. Williams for all the Board of Ed meetings, which we put in our cost through grants and through our own funds that we've come in with. The reason why we ended up getting the town's support initially a few years back, several years back, of 13,000 was that we pay all the staff to do these meetings out of our funds. So the town was, was kind enough then to realize that they would help us recoup that cost, and that's where that annual contribution came from. Dan Arman is joining me. He's a member of the Board of Directors at Totucket TV who has some words to, to say, and we just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed on where things are and what we're looking for in terms of, of support. Dan?
Madam Mayor, Council, thank you for having us tonight. I did, just wanted to reiterate that, you know, Totucket TV is also a town asset. We provide transparency in government by providing access to council and BOE meetings to those that cannot attend. We collaborate with economic development and promotional videos that have garnered worldwide recognition, recognition. And we also promote the town by having shows that people can share their concerns, their views, and hobbies, like I Want to Know. We provide, again, as Walter said, we provide the equipment that's used here at Town Hall and at the high school in their audiovisual program, and we maintain all this equipment at our expense. So as Walter said, you know, we're really looking to try to offset the cuts that we've received from the cable providers throughout the years, and there's no sustain, there's no funding model presented that, you know, we're comfortable with that we feel like we'll be able to sustain ourselves without additional funding and help from the town. So thank you very much for your consideration, and I guess that's about it.
Yeah, and I'll just add one thing. We have tried, I say we, us and other paid community TV stations in Connecticut have been trying for over five years at the state level to address this issue. The issue was caused by state statutes that were written when cable TV was the only game. There was no internet. There was no streaming. We have pushed, we've hired our own lobbyists. Last year, we had Focus Government Affairs, and Mike Dyra, who helped us greatly. We met with minority and majority party leaders in Hartford. We met, sat down with the governor, who was a former cable, former cable TV system owner. Governor would not support anything. He was, his quote was that he was against bringing the tax on cable TV companies. I had just specifically said, we're just looking to maintain things, not add, but that didn't make a difference to him. What we were trying to do is just get the statute changed so that it would reflect subscribers, not cable TV subscribers. And that way, companies like Comcast, who may lose a cable subscriber but still have an internet subscriber, if that law, that statute changed, section 16331, that would solve the problem. But we have been, you know, basically hitting dead ends in every effort that we've made. And so that's why, you know, we want you to know that's what's happening. It's just getting worse. We're continuing to push for a state resolution, but I, I think right now that's not going to happen, and so we're looking for, you know, continued municipal support to some extent to help us continue to survive. It looks like the station that serves the New Britain area will be closing at the end of this month. They're going to be the first one to go, and they're a big one. They serve eight towns. So it's, it's not a pretty picture, and we wanted to just update you and hopefully have you consider some additional support. And again, I'll hand these out. Unfortunately, I only have five, but you can maybe top him, but this will at least show you our losses, our income, our expenses, so.
And to add to that, you know, our broadcasts are on YouTube, not just on cable, for those that do not have cable anymore, which is a source of the problem, but everything is accessible.
So that's it. Thank you. If you can give some consideration to that during the budget season, I'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Now on to reports of committees, boards, and commissions. First one is economic development.
The Economic Development Committee, they had the restaurant month, and they had oh, just shy of 3,000 entries, and they had two winners. Well, first place winner was Troy Cooper, and second was Michelle, I'm not sure if I'm going to say her name correctly, Viterisi.
Viterisi.
Viterisi. And they had good feedback from the owners and some members of the public, and they're hoping to have a bigger and better event next year. And the last meeting we had, the town manager gave flood out some ideas that they're in discussion. We don't want to bring it out right now, but, and they're looking into doing something good. Rory's been doing an outstanding job handling the whole committee, so see what happens.
All right, thank you. Park and Recreation did not meet last month. Their next meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, the 25th. Police Commission.
The Police Commission met on March 10th. The first event was the swearing-in ceremony and Sergeant Misery Dino by our town manager. And then we had a very nice little cake and reception afterwards. There was a continued discussion about ATVs on both public and private properties. That continues to be a problem, but I think that's a problem probably in every town in the state. Chief Lovelace discussed the opportunity for the police department to join the Bureau of Specialized Services. He also mentioned that during his budget presentation, and there will be more discussion about that tonight. In terms of being the traffic authority, the Police Commission agreed to send a letter from the Fire Commission about the dangerous intersection, the one between Clintonville Road, Woodhouse Avenue, and Pistapod Road. And I can personally attest that that is a very dangerous intersection. They have a proposed solution, and the Police Commission agreed to send that to the state of Connecticut. The other thing is, the state, the state has sent a letter to the, to the traffic authority to put rumble strips on Route 17 from North Branford to North Haven. Unfortunately, the Police Commission does not like that particular idea because of the noise and how it disturbs households, so they're sending a letter not supporting it. But I think the state probably does it anyway. That's my report.
Okay, thank you. Fire Commission.
Fire Commission met on March 6th.
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
You want to go?
I'm going to go.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
If you have the notes.
So Fire Commission met on March 6th. Basically, it was, we talked about the budget, fire motor piece, fire rescue billing, and the sale of the old engine was approved, and it is now gone from the town of North Branford.
Engine or tower?
Tower.
The tower. Tower was sold for $5,500.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I was going to ask a question tonight because what was it, four or five months ago, we had voted to donate that to North Carolina?
Yeah, that fell through.
But so since we voted on it, why did that information not come back to us as a, in our, on our agenda? I would have thought that would have been appropriate, no?
Actually, it did come back, I believe, because I think you mentioned.
Yeah, they did indicate that North Carolina actually declined the, the equipment. They didn't want the apparatus. So they did come back to us and let us know that, and the intention was thereafter to see if there was a suitor for it.
But was it formally on a, on an agenda? I mean, wouldn't that consist of some, I mean, we formally voted to move it. Well, in any case, I, I, maybe I missed it.
I mean, the only thing that, the last I heard was Anthony said that he had reached out to them, and then he had to reach out back to them because he had not heard from them. So that was the last report to the council, is that he had to reach back out to them because he hadn't heard from them. And I, I didn't know anything after that, just knew about it through reading Fire Commission minutes, but it wasn't brought back to the council, that they did not.
So what, what happened?
So after, after North Carolina had no interest in it, we relisted it back on a site online. We had an offer of $15,000, which never materialized. It was from a volunteer fire department in Texas. They never called the gentleman back that was running the site. We went back, put it on again. The highest we got through the site was a $5,000 bid. We had a local gentleman who came in at 5,500, was more than the bid, and that's what the accept it was.
So is that, is that, was that done appropriately to our, whatever our policy? I don't know. I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, the town manager was invited.
It was done as surplus, yeah.
Okay, all right. But I, I just, I'm just surprised that it, there wasn't a formal response back to the council after we formally.
Yeah, to your point, because you, you did vote to, to send that. It probably ought to have, but I thought I had heard that it had been reported out during one of the council meetings that.
I recall hearing that at one of your meetings, and you reported that they did not want it, I mean, North or South Carolina.
Yeah, I think it came up under a fire commission. I asked Anthony, I had spoke up at a meeting, and I asked, and he had said to me that they didn't want it. I just kind of randomly asked him, and they said they didn't want it. But that, well, it wasn't too formal, but you just asked him.
Yeah, you know, it is, you know, it's what are, you know, what are you going to do now, but it's just, I, I, I'm just surprised, because I, I didn't know anything about it. I was just going to ask the question tonight, because I didn't hear anything about it. I know we wanted to make a big deal about it, and I, I didn't hear anything. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning met on March 6th, and they approved the, their portion of the storage shed at the high school, the plant, the plans they approved, the plans. John Florio included the, the electric and lighting into the plans that they requested, so they voted on that, and they passed it, their portion of it. And then there, there's a, a submission on the table for what they call closed-door pharmacy at B&amp;H that they tabled again, and they're going to, they're going to, they want to check with the, the Chief of Police to see if there was any issues with that being at B&amp;H, and then it'll be on the, their agenda in their next meeting, whether they pass it or not.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Finance Subcommittee. We met last, last week. There are several items on our agenda for tonight, and some of the things that we also had discussed that we approved at our last meeting, and I know the RFPs are out on the street right now for pension advisor, a financial advisor, and the bonds on there. We did get an update. will be going to the permanent project building committee at their next meeting. They have not discussed this for a couple of months because it was kind of on hold during the winter months. Most of the project is complete. There's just a few items left on there. So they will get that report and then go from there in regards to that. And then, like I said, there's a few items on tonight's agenda that we also discussed. That's it. Public Safety Communications Subcommittee.
Okay. The Public Safety Communications Committee had a special meeting on March fourth. The town manager was in attendance, and the town attorney. And it was a very important meeting for both the Fire Commission, the Police Commission, and I should also say in Public Works, to talk about issues with their radios in terms of transmission. The Fire Commission right now has a very difficult situation where they have, according to what I understand, that they have three vehicles that are in what's called maintenance mode. The radios aren't working. The Fire Commission, and I have, and the Fire Commission is here, so if I say something wrong, correct me or add, they are not going to use the repeaters anymore, because the repeaters have caused, caused a lot of problems for them. I have to thank the town attorney for writing a wonderful letter to Motorola. I think we're getting some response right away, according to the fire chief. NORCOM came down today, and they're coming tomorrow. They have to look at every vehicle, every radio, and they have to fix the problem. We are, this is a safety issue, not only for the, for our first responders, it's a safety issue for our town residents. I can't express enough the concern that the Fire Commission has, and the firefighters have at this point, the fire chief, the police chief, and also public safety there, I mean, sorry, Public Works is having difficulty with communications. It's something that the council needs to be aware of. I really appreciate what our town attorney did, because we need Motorola to respond. And it's a serious situation. And I don't know if you guys have any questions, but Eddie is here, and he certainly would answer any of them.
Well, so, I know we paid quite a bit of money for the repeaters to be put into the vehicles, right? So, so if we're not using them, what's going to happen to them, and what?
Well, the long-term result or usage is going to be up to a committee of the Public Safety Communications Committee, fire, and police personnel. We're going to make a decision as a whole. We're going to get on the whiteboard and say, what's the pros, what's the cons of using the repeaters, not the repeaters? Do we go simplex? Do we go, you know, UHF? Do we go digital? Do we go analog? This is a decision that is going to be made in a collaborative effort, everybody involved. So, no decision has been made yet. We're going to get everything working first, and then we're going to come back and look at it and say, is the repeater the best long-term solution for the town? There are some pluses and minuses to having repeaters. Is digital versus analog on the fire ground? Which way is that going to play out? There's, again, there's pluses and minuses for both of those. We're going to make a decision, everybody in one room, and just put it on the board and just make a decision at that point. But the goal was to get everything we have working currently, then we'll move on to the long-term, what's the long-term situation here.
So, so if the decision is that we're not going with repeaters, can we get our money back? Because it was a big cost of that. I mean, and we, I mean, we paid a, you know, consultant, and I believe this was a recommendation, if I remember correctly, that this was one of the ways that we fixed the prob, part of our problem. And obviously, it's not working. And if the decision is that we aren't going to use them, what's our recourse? Because it's, it's not cheap. They weren't cheap. So I think that needs to be taken into consideration, and I don't know where you got them from, if they were through Motorola or NORCOM or wherever.
Everything comes, the equipment comes, it's Motorola equipment installed by NORCOM. That's the way the, NORCOM is a subcontractor of Motorola. You're buying Motorola radios, NORCOM is installing them in the vehicles. That's the.
But it rests with Motorola.
Ultimately, the contract is with Motorola.
That's who the huge contract was with, was Motorola.
You are correct.
Okay. So for transparency purposes, what is the problem? Have we underlined what the problem is? Because this has been going on for a long time, and obviously, every department, you know, every, every town has to have a communication system. This is not, this is not months, this is years now. Have we located the problem that we need to fix? Because it seems like we're fumbling the football.
Yeah, there, well, there's a couple of different problems. There is the ability on the fire ground to talk unit to unit, that you get the lockout. That's problem number one.
Okay.
The problem that Council Diamond referred to is, in the last week or two, we've had three radios go into, on the display, it comes up as maintenance mode. You can't talk. It's inoperable.
Okay.
So the question is, what's causing that? So the initial reaction, initial response from NORCOM was, maintenance mode translates to a power problem. So that's why they're coming into town, as Council Diamond mentioned, all day today, all day tomorrow, they're going to touch every single piece of apparatus.
Okay.
And just say, okay, is all the wiring improperly? Is all, is, because they're finding some things that, again, I'll have a full report tomorrow, after they finish, hopefully tomorrow, maybe it's going to a third day, I don't know. But they're going to touch every radio to eliminate any kind of craziness that's happening. So I'll have a better answer for you tomorrow.
Okay, so it's lockout during fire ground, when you're on the fire ground, and it's three radios?
Three radios, two fire, one maintenance mode.
And it may be a power issue, and we're going to check all equipment.
That is correct.
And that, they believe, will find the root of this issue, that it will go away, and we don't have to hear, we'll hear this working correctly, for this very important.
I cannot make that comment. I am not, I don't profess to be a radio guy, so I can't make that comment. But another, whole other problem, if you want to talk about problems, is the pagers.
Okay.
We've had problems for day one with pagers, where suddenly, just randomly, whatever mode you're on, will reboot itself. You'll say you're on fire dispatch. You'll come out and say, fire dispatch monitor, which means something's wrong. So we finally got everybody on board with that issue, and we shipped seventeen pagers back to NORCOM to ship to the pager maker, which is a third-party, Unication. Two have come back. This is one of the two that came back. We're trying to label them with different colored tapes, see how they work. There's three more that are in transit, and the other twelve are still somewhere between here and Unication. So that issue is a serious issue, because the pagers not only reboot, which signifies that there's a problem with the mechanics of it, but the reception is less than optimum, let's say.
And these are relatively new, correct?
Oh, yeah. They're part of the whole gig, part of the whole thing.
They're part of what we bonded for.
Right. So the problem with these is, the problem with these is, is this a pager problem, which they've identified, part A? Is it now a system problem, where if I'm in my house, I don't get a clear signal? That means, again, the antennas, the two sites we've identified in town, maybe don't have enough horsepower, for lack of a better word, to get good signals out. We have people that live close by that can't get reception at their house. Again, we're a department that relies on pagers to get our members out. I mean, we have a backup mains on the cell phone, it could keep going off. But, again, we paid a boatload of money to have a working system, which included pagers, because we're, that's how voluntary fire departments work, getting activated. So there's, there's multiple issues. Again, I'll have a better answer tomorrow on the repeater slash power issue. The pager issue will hopefully, once we get the twelve or fifteen back that are, so the other thing that kind of irks me to be, I guess I can talk about it, you would, we, I was hoping that when we sent these out to the factory, they would dig into it and say, oh, here's the problem, why these are keep rebooting. It's a bad board, right? It's a bad this, it's a bad that. But we'll give you a new one instead. So you haven't solved the problem.
Yeah.
You haven't identified the problem. They're just going to give us new ones, which, hey, give us new ones, I don't care, as long as we have the same number we can give you back. But you, I would have thought, given the number of, we probably have one hundred, twenty-five, one hundred and fifty pagers, that we're going to have to swap now, which is kind of a logistical nightmare. Everybody's got their pager numbers, serial numbers assigned to, this one's assigned to Rose, and it's like, they got to get all those back in and give all new pager numbers out, you know, serial numbers, you know, it's a nightmare.
So who's accountable for this? Is it Motorola?
This is, well.
Or is it someone here in North Bramford?
This is, no. This, well, I have one pointing fingers. This is, this is Unication, this is a third party. This is the, this is the only pager reportedly in the world that worked, works on the seven, eight-hundred band, which is what we're on now.
Okay.
So we're kind of locked into Unication pagers. Reportedly, that's the only one that works in the world. We've been told that since, since the beginning.
Okay.
So that's one aspect of it. Again, the repeater aspect is.
Did you buy them through Motorola, though?
Negative, through NORCOM.
Through NORCOM.
NORCOM is a third-party.
NORCOM is the seller of the pagers, the program.
But overall, works with the overall program with Motorola. Okay. And Brian, you've lettered, or you authored a strongly worded letter to make sure that this is something that they're taking serious? Is that what I'm?
The, we sent a letter last Friday to Motorola.
Okay.
The senior management of Motorola concerning the issue with not only the apparatus where they're going into the service mode, but also issues on the fire scene since December of last year, where firefighters, for instance, on the roof could not communicate with management, staff on the ground. Radios were not even working at close range. So that was Friday. On Monday, I got a response from their in-house general counsel at their corporate headquarters of Motorola in Chicago, acknowledging receipt of it, and saying that they had people looking into it from headquarters in Chicago to figure out. And they would get back to me.
Okay.
So, you know, it's gone up to their highest levels, and it seems like something's happened already with NORCOM coming back. So we should have a further update, you know, by the end of this week with Motorola corporate. We haven't done anything on the pagers yet, as they're still trying to figure out what this issue, that's a separate contract, a separate issue.
Should we not get resolution shortly? What is our next steps? Is it litigation?
It may be litigation, you know, we have to look at the contract closely, and it may be litigation against Motorola for breach of contract. I have to look at the warranties we have on the equipment, and whether this goes beyond a warranty to a more fundamental.
Yeah, we don't want to end up in another, you know, middle school scenario where we're just right outside the warranty, the library, I can give you another litany of ones in North Bramford, we're just right outside the warranty, and it's on North Bramford to pay a little more. So I want to make sure that doesn't happen. Yeah, I mean. Chief?
Kind of summarize it. You know, your frustration, trust me, is not even close to our frustration. You know, this has been meetings and meetings for four or five years now, so we're engaging the right parties. We're tackling, it's multiple issues. It's a very complicated system. It's not going to the one thing. So you can't just turn a knob here and expect the rest to follow down line. So let us do our due diligence. When we have better information, to report back, you know, we're not giving up on anything. We're not throwing away any pieces of equipment. We got to, we got to break this problem apart and then come back and tackle it at different angles. So different pieces are going to come together faster. Other ones are more scientific, where they have to go out to engineers and things of that nature, and that just doesn't happen in 24 hours, no matter who you are. It's not, it's not that they don't care, it just, it's a lot of scientific stuff, so.
I respect that, but we're talking four to five years. As you said, there has to be some.
Well, I don't think we put them, these weren't in.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying from the start of the program of design and all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Trust me, we understand how extended out is, and I'm not signing the closeout on this project until this system is 100 percent. So we're working through it, and all the commissions are communicating.
And you feel like it's starting to get in that right direction?
We're moving in the right direction. All right, good.
So I know Public Works is part of this also, on pagers, or, so are you experiencing the same problems for any?
Mine's much longer problems, but they're getting, Chief Scott.
Okay, so that's all part of?
Yeah. We had some issues with the radios, and we got issues with the call, which is a call call they call it. So then, in the winter, we could hear already, we could hear through all our trucks what's going on. So, but we can't block them, but we're here with all, potential call or certain accidents. There's a lot of our radio will respond, especially in winter. We respond to all calls, you know, in the snowstorm. So we kind of follow away for them. So it's kind of important. And we have like, what, how many, are there, are there, is Anthony, four or five?
Four or five, man.
That we have that, you know. And then you have John Florio and Kenny are two guys that have trucks, so they can, you know, they respond quickly. But, I mean, they're working, it's just the.
All right. It's all part of the issue. Okay.
I'll just say, I appreciate the effort that's being made here. I know you, everyone here is trying to get to the same resolution. It's not lost on me that the effort you guys are making on this. It's just, it's frustrating to see it happening over and over again, so. But thank you for all the efforts that you're making.
Mayor, can I comment?
Yep.
I don't mean to drag this out, and I'm not blaming anybody here, but I know there's only a few of us that were on the council back about four or five years ago, when I spoke up, because I had heard about the problems we have with the radios, I think it was five years ago. And I had basically said I wouldn't vote to spend any more of town's money whatsoever until the radios were fixed. And the whole thing started with, they had to put up antennas and everything, and then to hear now that we're still, five years later, where people can't communicate, it just, you know, like I said, I'm not blaming anybody here, but it's very, very discouraging that's been going on for.
A lot.
Four or five years, and, you know, that could be somebody's life, that pager not working, or the radio's not working.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay. Next committee report is inland wetlands.
The inland wetlands commission is working with a site plan for thirty-two zero road for the development of a site which includes clearing, excavation, grading, filling, drainage, and future construction of a new eight thousand square foot building for a fence company. I know that at the last meeting, they did not approve anything, because they wanted to do a site walk, and I know they did that. And their next meeting is next week, and I'm sure they'll be discussing what they found in the site plan, I mean, site walk.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And blueprint committee.
There was no meeting last month.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Town managers report, general updates.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. In honor of St. Patrick's Day, the Senior Center held their annual St. Patrick's Day luncheon. I was joined by Mayor Angeloni, Deputy Mayor McMillan, and many staff and volunteers to serve our seniors' corned beef, cabbage, and potatoes. And our own emergency management director, Bill Seward, played some traditional Irish music on the bagpipe as well for a very enjoyable and festive event. Also, our team at Parks, Recreation, and Senior Center once again did their annual leprechaun hunt on the trails at Harrison Preserve, where children could explore and find the leprechaun's door and take a gold coin home from his loop. We also flew the Irish flag here at town hall in celebration. We've now switched over to the Italian flag, which is now flying over town hall in honor of St. Joseph's Day, which is tomorrow, March nineteenth. Councilor Miller reported on Restaurant Month. I wouldn't have anything other to add than to congratulate Troy Cooper for his winning the first prize, and Michelle Viterisi, who won second prize. Again, we had just under three thousand cast lottery tickets for that, so it was a pretty successful event, and we're looking again to see what we can do to improve it for next year. As you know, we begun our budget process with the first budget workshop last week, and the next scheduled for next week. Our team is busy completing the full proposed budget for the town council ahead of our scheduled first public hearing. The Board of Assessment Appeals has concluded its work, hearing appeals on assessments on March third, fourth, and fifth. There were sixty-seven appeals in all. Fifty-five residential appeals were filed, with twenty-two reductions being granted totaling one point three million. One residential was increased four thousand six hundred. There were twelve commercial appeals with four reductions granted totaling two point seven million, resulting in a total change of a reduction of four million in assessed value. The appeals process is concluded for the year, and residents and businesses are reminded[1698.36] one point three million. One residential was increased four thousand six hundred. There were twelve commercial appeals with four reductions granted totaling two point seven million, resulting in a total change of a reduction of four million in assessed value. The appeals process is concluded for the year and residents and businesses are reminded that the Board of Assessment Appeals will convene again next year and new appeals as well as previously denied appeals can be heard again at that time. The newly reconstituted Agriculture, Agriculture Commission held its organizational meeting on Wednesday, March twelfth, here in the council chambers. Mayor Angeloni and I were here present to give guidance to the newly reformed commission. The commission reviewed their charge in the town code. Elected member Stephanie Capasso is chair, member Joe DiFrancesco III is vice chair and member Jenna Gobro is recording secretary. They've scheduled their future meetings to take place monthly on the second Tuesday of each month, six thirty PM at the police station meeting room. And we thank these volunteers for their service and look forward to the work they will do on behalf of the town. On March third, the Environment Committee of the state legislature held a public hearing on legislation being advanced by House Minority Leader Vin Candelora. The measure would create a farmer's crop loss reimbursement program to reimburse farmers who incur crop loss attributable to significant acute weather events such as the hailstorm that impacted three farms in Northford last August, especially Chickarelli's Harrison Hill Farm. I provided written testimony in support of this proposed bill, as did a number of local individuals, and I'm pleased to report that that bill received a unanimous joint favorable report, um, in the Environment Committee last Friday and will now move forward to the Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee for further action. We held a ribbon cutting in conjunction with the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce to celebrate the arrival of Poo Squad, which works out of Northford and provides full-service residential and commercial pooper-scooper services in addition to yard sanitation and deodorization. I was joined by Mayor Angeloni, Assistant Town Manager Burke for this event to welcome them here to town hall. Uh, and I did not think I'd get the opportunity to use the poo emoji on my official Facebook page for the town, uh, for official business, but finally that dream has come true and I was able to use it for legitimate purposes.
[laughing]
We're currently planning to hold a ribbon cutting to welcome the arrival of the food pantry of North Branford in their new location at two sixty Forest Road, the former police station building. As you recall, the council agreed for the town to enter into a lease agreement for the food pantry to occupy the top floor of the old PD building. Rita Nae's husband Phil has overseen an amazing reformation of the space. I had the opportunity to walk through the completed renovation last week and for those of you who have yet to see what they have done, you will not believe it is the same building. Uh, the ribbon cutting is scheduled for this Saturday, March twenty-second, ten AM, and any council members who are able are invited to join in the celebration of the new space. We have additional ribbon cutting events being planned and details will be coming to members of the council shortly. A reminder that applications for the elderly homeowner, totally disabled homeowner and additional veteran programs are currently available in the assessor's office now through May fifteenth. Applicants must be sixty-five by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, or totally disabled as designated by the Social Security Administration to qualify. If you have questions, you can call the assessor's office, two oh three four eight four six oh one three. Just a reminder that I put out a monthly email newsletter that goes out on the fourth Friday of every month in consideration of the holidays. Sorry, that's the old one there. The, this, uh, the next one is going to go out, um, on Friday, March twenty-eighth. Um, the newsletter contains news and announcements from the town and is a great way to keep up with what we have happening in town. And there's a signup form on the front page of the website, um, to receive the newsletter. Uh, also a reminder, we have the town emergency notification available through Civic Ready and that residents can sign up for you. Uh, you can just text NORTHBRANFORD, no spaces, to three eight two seven six to get emergency alerts and community notifications. You can also sign up online at northbranfordct.gov backslash alerts or call four seven five six five five oh four zero zero to sign up via phone. Notifications go out via text, email and phone call. That concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. And now Town Managers report on the Permanent Project Building Committee.
Uh, with regard to the North Branford Police Department, we are still awaiting an action plan to be approved between Centec, which is the third party hired to conduct the independent review of the HVAC system, and SPNA. There was a meeting today in my conference room and a potential correction has been identified and it is currently under review. North Branford High School, the exterior, exterior glass consultant is engaged in reviewing all glass installed. Um, the review is pretty much complete at this point and the relative action items should be addressed with, uh, full replacement over the summer. North Branford Intermediate School, majority of the base project is complete. There is a winter pause and sighting will commence in April as the weather permits over April break. Stanley Two Williams Community Center Pavilion, construction is underway and we are waiting the weather to warm up to do the slab installation. And Department of Public Works Building, the bid has been posted and the bid results are due in, in early April. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Um, I, I know this item is on the agenda. Um, it's the bid specs for the storage shed. Do you know if those bid specs were looked at by the Permanent Project Building Committee?
I do not.
Can you, can you just check to see once, I mean, we're still waiting for them to come back to us with the budget, but, um, once that gets approved, then we can approve the bid specs. But since there's been some changes and I know Permanent Project has also talked about some changes, I don't know if these bid specs, all of the material were, was reviewed by Permanent Project.
Sure.
So if we can just get that out ahead of time, that would be great. Um, okay. Next item on the agenda is citizens' statements, petitions and correspondence. Just a reminder to please state your name and there is a three-minute, um, limit.
Okay, I'm, uh, before you start your time, I want to put a disclaimer. What I have to say is not to pick on anyone, name anyone. If I name somebody, it's only factual, it's not a personal attack. And also, the town manager, after I leave, is allowed to contract the Poo Squad to clean up the mess I make. [laughing]
Well, let's see what happens here.
Okay. You have two and a half minutes left.
Okay. Might be a bigger mess. I read something today that distressed me because it involves a volunteer fire department closing in Torrington. It could happen here. And Walter and Tommy, you guys always have lots of questions. And now Walter, you want to know what's going on in the fire department, so you, please pay attention to what I say. You know why they're going out of business? They can't get enough volunteers. They're closing down a Torrington working fire department with volunteers. We don't have that problem here yet, but I feel if you don't honestly consider everything these guys need, these, these are subject mask matter experts you had talking to you a couple of weeks ago. They live it, they know it, they do it. The volunteers, they don't get compensated for gas to drive to the firehouse to pick up. You've got to take care of these people because I don't want to read Facebook, North Branford Volunteer Fire Department closes for lack of volunteers. And I'm serious, this distresses me personally because I've needed their services. On December eighth, it was two, twenty twenty-three, I think, when I was working at the Potato Fest grounds with the hayrides, I needed their services. They rendered great services. I'm a hundred percent better because of it. That might go away. What if somebody didn't come to my aid and they had to wait for an ambulance out in the haven? Who knows how I, the outcome would have been? This is serious business and it's got to continue at the present level. If you start cutting, you're going to lose the spreet decor. We already had this discussion. And when you lose that, you lose your volunteers. And when you lose your volunteers, don't want to get up in the middle of the night like they do when all of us respond and the heavy call volumes you have, we got a problem. And it, like I say, I take it personally because I've been rewarded by their services. You can't ask for better people to serve you in this town. So you've got to find funds and you've got to stop trying to figure out how to make them work better. They know how to work excellently. They don't know your input. You've never worked their fire services. How can you help them if you haven't worked their fire services? You don't know the behind the scenes. Trust Anthony, trust Colangelo, trust your fire commission. Listen to them. Keep this service in town or I'm going to have, if I pick up my phone and see North Branford's going out of business, I'm not going to be happy. And I mean, I don't like to be like this, but I'm a citizen that cares for other citizens. I've been helped. I want everybody to be helped. And if it's a dollar sign over somebody's head that can't get help, I'm really going to be pissed and I'll be back here yelling at you. Okay, permission to call the Poo Squad?
Ask to go out to bed.
Okay. Any other citizens' comments at this time?
Yeah, Steve Maloney, I reside in Tochoka Valley Mobile Home and RV Park and we have problems with the flooding of, of Farm River. We've had to evacuate and basically, as I understand it, there was illegal dumping that was done into the river. The river was, was eight feet deep and now it's only two feet deep and the pollution of the dumping killed, uh, some marine life and basically, we've had to evacuate and I'm afraid what next time's going to be like. I mean, the last time we evacuated, now, I'm seventy-two and it's mainly, you know, retirees and senior citizens there. When the bus came to evacuate, the, my neighbors, they had planes and strollers, they, they had a very difficult time getting onto the, you know, the bus and everything and this is a problem, I don't think we can say we'll do it next year. I mean, we could get flooded out at any time. And I think really, we need to contact the Army Corps of Engineers and have them dredge the Farm River so it can flow properly and this problem might, might go away. I mean, it's, we've had evacuation, I'm, I'm afraid what next time is going to be like. I mean, my neighbor Al, it, when we got flooded last time, he took a fall and got injured and everything and something that's got to be done about it right now. I mean, you, I realize a lot of people don't, don't, might think they don't live in the mobile home park, so it's not their problem, but it's everybody's problem. It's a problem for the town, it's a problem for public safety and I'm saying is, this problem needs to be solved here and now. I would appreciate any help I could get from you to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Al Leegy. Last year I donated to the police department. This year I donate to the fire department. I've talked to the town about the water problem. They said they were going to take care of it. Nothing was done. We even had a meeting at two thirty. I tape everything I do. I'm taping now also. So we'll see what happens there. So, maybe I'll be suing the town, I don't know what I'm going to do.
Are there any other public comments?
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I would like to add thirteen G under new business. Use of opioid dollars to fund a Bureau of Specialized Services officer.
Okay. So the motion has been made to amend the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries, so we'll amend the agenda and, um, did we-
Is it possible to discuss that now? Or do you want to wait until-
Uh, no, because chief is here, um, I would like to just move it up before we start resonate the next item, eleven. I just have one citizen comment quick for myself and it just piggybacks on the ribbon cutting on Saturday at the new, uh, food pantry. Um, they are also having a open house for the community. The ribbon cutting's at ten and the open house is from eleven to two. Um, and with the, uh, cuts, um, from Connecticut Food Share, which is where they get a lot of their supplies from, um, they are in desperate need of items and what they are in need of is canned beans, instant potatoes, hearty soups, baking items such as brownie, cake mix, muffin mix, um, jarred sauce and canned vegetables. Um, so if anyone, uh, we certainly invite the community to come and see the new food pantry and, um, as, when you come, they're also holding the food drive. Um, as, um, the town manager said, the transformation of the old police department is absolutely remarkable. Um, I've been there several times, um, helping them and through this process and I will say, if it was not for Rita Nae's husband, Phil Nae, who is a licensed contractor, the amount of work that he has put in, in the last five months to get that station, um, as the new food pantry is absolutely incredible. So, uh, we have, they have been told by, um, the, from Connecticut Food Share who they have a partnership with, so ours is the largest food pantry in the state. And Rita Nae has definitely, um, raised the bar, um, on the, on what a food pantry should look like. We are also the food, first food pantry to have an education room in it, center. They already have some groups s- signed up that they will be coming in so they can talk about food insecurity with them, show them exactly what the facility is, um, how it operates. Um, so I really encourage the public to come out on Saturday to see what the food pantry looks like. Um, they are very ecstatic about their new home. It is all on one level, it's handicap accessible, um, the people can now, they have shopping carts, they shop like they're in a grocery store. So the old conference room in the police department is the shopping area. Rita applied for a grant with Home Depot. That is where she had a corporate job with Home Depot for a number of years. They donated all of the flooring, installed it, and they donated commercial-grade freezers and refrigerators that are in the shopping area. Um, so it really is incredible what that place has turned into and North Branford should be very, um, proud of that facility and all of our volunteers that helped run the food pantry. Um, so please come out on Saturday between eleven and two, um, for the open house and the food drive. Well, they prefer food, but they will accept monetary donations because the monetary donations, they just have to go out and shop then so that, so it's another step for them. They, they will take monetary donations and they also, for those that are on Facebook, Rita has posted on both of the community pages. They also have an Amazon wishlist, um, for the food pantry so that you can go on Amazon, go on to, just click on the link, order it and it will be directly delivered to the food pantry, um, also. So that's another easy way people were asking about that. So that is another thing that they have done, um, also to set up, um, to make it easier for people. So, um, it really is an incredible place that they've done on there.
Can I make one comment? Um, just was to add, this Company Three, um, Annual Easter Icon is scheduled for April twelfth with a rain date of April nineteenth, so it's always something that, uh, the kids look forward to and be aware of that. Look into, uh, the website for any information on that. You should read the rundown.
Okay. So, now we're going to go to the, um, agenda item that was added, thirteen G, which is use of opioid dollars to fund the BSS officer. Um, chief, would you like to just-
Madam Mayor, if you could first entertain a motion to take an item out of order, thirteen G specifically.
I'll make that motion to, uh, change the item out of order from thirteen G moved up to now. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? Okay, thank you. Okay, chief.
So I, I appreciate it and, um, as you've heard from my presentation, uh, last week during my budget, um, the most proposed motion in front of you, um, gives me the ability to enter an agreement with, uh, Connecticut State Police for the Bureau of Special Services. Um, what that basically does for us is, is allows us to receive the town being, uh, stipend, uh, once we staff that officer. Also, within that motion is I gave a, a proposed, uh, budgetary number, um, to allow me to go out, um, and, um, hire an officer to backfill, um, so we can start this process of getting somebody in the special unit.
Cool.
That sums it up in, in short, unless you got some more specific questions on the Bureau of Special Services there.
Um, does anyone have any questions, um, for the chief?
Appreciate putting it together.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby authorizes from the town's opioid settlement fund to cover personnel, all personnel across associated with authorizing Police Chief James Loveless to enter into an agreement with the Connecticut State Police for a grade A officer to be detailed to the Bureau of Specialized Services effective April first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion was made by Councillor Diamond, seconded by Councillor Palladino. Any further discussions or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you, chief.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Moving on to, um, item eleven. First item is appointment of Greg Sharp to the Solid Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee. Correction on his term, it's to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-five and not twelve thirty-one twenty-seven as was so.
Second.
Motion was made by Councillor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor McMillan. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, the next item, uh, we just need to hold off on because that's our executive session at the end and then we'll come back to that. Sorry, Karen, Sarah. So, um, on to number twelve. Item A, proposed North Branford High School athletic storage building. I do not see anyone here, so we will just continue to table this, this item. This is, we're just waiting for the budget so that we can prove this. And item B is the approval of the bid specs for the athletic storage building. So we'll just table that. The next item is accounting for utilities at 305 Forest Road, which is the new police department. Jimmy just left, right? So I'm not sure if we need to continue this or not. So we'll just leave it on here. I think he's kind of waiting out the year. This all has to do with the issues with the HVAC and having to use more propane and everything else. So we'll just hold that for right now.
I just, I did see someone at the building today doing some work. So they're in the building today, so we know what they're doing.
Okay. So they're working on it. Next item is homeowners' benefit adjustment. And I believe we have the town assessor here. Oh, there he is. Okay. This was briefly discussed last month, but we did not vote, vote on this yet. So Dave, if you would just like to update us on this?
Yeah, I think we're budgeting for Anthony, 125.
165.
165. I think, I looked over, I looked over the numbers again. And I feel that we could get away with this increasing that by between $10,000 and $20,000. I anticipate maybe 10 to 15, or 15 to new 20, 15 to 20 new applicants. So I don't think we need to increase the amount to budget by that, by that much. I think we could get away with $15,000 to $20,000.
Above the 125.
Yeah. I think that's reasonable.
And this is because we're increasing, the proposal is to increase the?
We're increasing the.
Dollar amount?
Yeah, we're increasing, increasing the unmarried limits from 50 to 60 and the married limits from 60 to $70,000. So by doing so, I think we'll attract maybe another, again, like I said, 15 to 20 new applicants.
Okay. All right. So I believe there is a motion. I know, I'm.
Also, Mayor, I also propose that we raise our limits by the same percentage the state increases their limits on an annual basis.
Madam Mayor, there is no prepared motion. There's just a memorandum from, which was the updated memorandum.
Oh, yes, okay.
From Mr. Ambrose.
Okay. But so do we have to vote on it or do, can we do it during budget?
Well, it's got to get adopted by you guys either way. So we could incorporate to a budget meeting if you want to. You're going to take a regular action at the budget sessions?
Okay.
I think it's a budget, it would be more of a budget item because you're not changing. He's, Mr. Ambrose is just indicating more people will be applying.
Well, we're, we're increasing the limit.
The limits as well?
Yes.
You'll have to increase the limits here and then fund it at the budget.
Right.
Okay. All right.
You need to do that now or next month, whatever year.
Okay. So let's just, let's do it at one of our budget workshops so that we can just do everything at one.
Okay. I want to do it next week at the workshop or?
Why don't we wait until after we have the public hearing? And then at one of those budget workshops?
Either the 10th?
The 8th or the 10th?
Okay.
Are we, are we considering increasing the annual income by the same percentage the state increases their?
We can, we can work that into the motion so that it's an automatic increase every year that we don't have to keep, keep doing it. It would just be an automatic increase based on whatever the state increases there. Are you proposing that it's the same level that the state increases?
Yeah, this way we'll avoid the compression issue down the line.
Right. 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 Okay. So, so we will, does anyone have any questions for the town assessor now in regards to this program and increasing the limits on it? Yep? Okay. All right. Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Okay. The next item E has already been done, so we don't have to do that. The bid is already out for the public works addition. We approved that at last month's meeting. So the next item is proposed postcards for budget referendum. So the town manager had gone over it with us at our last month's meeting. And we tabled it. So it's on page 81 of our packet. The information as far as if we want to do it for this year. There is no money currently budgeted for this item. So would it come, if we decided to do anything, would it come out of contingency? Is that where it would?
That would be the idea.
Okay. So there's two proposals. One is for the postcards that would get mailed directly to the households at a cost of approximately $2,700. The second is a insert that can go into the to-tucket times, which there's a cost of approximately $500 for going into the to-tucket times. And then on top of that, it's the, the printing of whatever the notice would look like, which might be another $500. Not exactly sure. It's a circulation of $6,100 for the to-tucket times. And so that would be about $1,000. So those are our two options. Or we can do nothing and just continue to get the word out as we do.
I think it's a waste of money. I think in increasingly digital age, it's kind of a, I mean, I appreciate the effort. I know it's something you're responding to from some inquiries. But I think you've done a great job of the website and you have communication. You can lead a horse to water, you can't make a drink. I don't think it's going to help any further. But that's my opinion. I think we talked about spending money and this is an area that we don't need to spend money.
I agree with Jeff.
I think, I mean, I drive through town, both ends of town because of my commute. So it's in my face twice a day. It's out there. I've never seen it better advertised, short of, I don't know, carrier pigeons. So I, I don't think, or you just going and driving everybody to the polls at, you know, gunpoint. I don't think we can do anything else to, to do this, so.
Okay. So is the consensus just to move on and do nothing? Just continue to do what we are doing?
Actually, I think, Mike, you just posted on Facebook digitally, as Jeff said. That's the way to get that word out, wasting your money in this.
Okay. Great. So the issue is closed. We're moving on. We are not going to send out anything. We will just keep our efforts, increase our efforts around that time.
You guys are tough. It's like buying a bag of peanuts compared to why would we spend money? But that's just my opinion, so.
So the, the budget referendum will be on Tuesday, May 13th. So that's the first public announcement and there will be more to come.
Mark the calendars, right?
Yes. There's going to be signs. The digital signs are going up. We have more, we have more digital signs that we can put on both ends of town plus at the 139 80 intersection and up in the triangle. Mike does a great job in his letter, his email letter that goes out in addition to the website.
Could we, could we do the reverse 911 or does that cost extra money?
We will.
Yeah, but you have to sign up for it on, on this type of an information that.
Well, it's just like a lot of people that probably don't look at the website.
Right. Right. So I mean, for those that have signed up for civic code, is that what it's called?
Behind that, which was, you know, to reach those that tell me that they're not getting any of the digital information.
The people that care, care.
Yeah.
Right?
So, so we'll, we'll do every method that we have and just go from there. Okay. Okay. Now on to new business, discussion and action. First item is electronic voting equipment lease agreement. This is on page 82 of our packet.
So Madam Mayor and Council, this is the standard electronic voting equipment lease agreement that's furnished by the Secretary of State's office to every town. I did flag, you know, some, some issues relative to that I discussed with the town attorney, which is concerns over the maintenance and costs, which they would expect us to uphold. Since then, I've gotten some additional information from the Secretary of State's office. I've placed it in all your folders. It gives a little bit of a breakdown and a schedule of what they expect to be maintenance costs. But of course, that doesn't make a difference if there's an, you know, a surprise breakdown or something that damaged the equipment. So hang in chads, whatever may happen to it. So it's, I don't think it's a gigantic concern, but I just wanted to flag that for your awareness that there's this aspect of the agreement. But it's been reviewed by the town attorney and we recommend your approval of authorization for me to sign the lease agreement.
Make the suggested motion. The North Branford Town Council hereby authorizes town manager Michael Lee Downs to sign the electronic voting equipment lease agreement provided by the Connecticut Secretary of State's office for new voter tabulator machines.
Second. Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion?
Yeah, so Mike, this is to replace what we have?
Yes. And in fact, they're coming to collect our tabulators, the current ones that we have tomorrow. So I guess we ought to get some new ones, right?
So that we have them for the budget referendum on May 13th?
And you have no choice. This is, this is the one machine that the Secretary of State requires municipalities to have. So that's why they cost a dollar, one time, the fee of a dollar for the Secretary of State. So you really don't have much choice.
Okay.
So everybody has the same?
Every municipality in Connecticut will be getting these. Some have gotten them already because they had to have special elections for various reasons over the last month. Some towns have not rolled out the new machines yet. You know, some of the towns we represent, they didn't want to jump into it too quick. But everyone will need them for November, the latest, if not earlier for referendum. And like I said, this is the only, only machine you can use. The issue was the maintenance cost because we were on a group, a number of town attorneys with the Secretary of State. We raised that issue. You know, we have no choice but to buy these, what's it going to cost to maintain them? Good question. No one seemed to know up there. But we're all, every municipality is in the same boat right now.
And we had eight machines. Now we'll have 11. So we're going to have a few more. Which is helpful because we now have a third district that we didn't have before under the prior agreement.
$1 to get them.
You can get a postcard.
All right. We're going to take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay. Next item is town council solicitation review on bid specifications.
Right. Thank you. This item is being advanced by our purchasing agent, NI. This is a request for your consideration that currently the town council with, relative to bids, both reviews the specifications and then has a bid come back again for approval. We understand that under previous staff and leadership, there had been issues with bids which led to the policy that required that double bite at the apple that the council asked for. But after two years of a change and I think a very positive record in purchasing with this administration and no bids having had to be rebid in that period, we're asking for consideration, particularly as the council now meets once a month instead of twice a month. And it gives us greater dexterity on the floor, so to speak, if you would consider allowing us to have the council get one final review of the bid and allow us to go out to bid for items without council review. This was brought to the finance committee last week, was favorably reviewed and approved for sending to the council tonight.
I personally think that he does a tremendous job compared to what we used to get in the past. And I think we should consider this.
I agree.
Okay. So do we need to have a motion to accept it? Or we can just tell you that we're okay not?
I guess it's policy, right?
I'd get a motion to, you know, to adopt the policy as presented by the town manager regarding bids.
All right. So I'll make that motion to, that's stipulated by town attorney.
Second?
Second.
Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just have one question, Mike. So when, when you're going out to bid for something, will we know that you're going out to? Will, will the council be briefed you're going out to bid, but just don't, don't review the bid spec itself?
You'll know. You're just not reviewing the bid specifications.
Right, okay. Just want to make that clear. We approve the bid spec when, when they want to reward it, right? I mean, that's.
Yeah, that's when it'll come back.
And ultimately, you'll see all of it, of course, again, when it comes to you.
Right. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay. Next item, additional procurement of P cards.
This item also comes from the purchasing agent, NI. The council's had, you know, pretty stringent policy with regards to P cards, understandably, wanting to exercise good controls with them. Currently, there are, we have about nine individuals who are authorized to have P cards. Under the current conditions, we feel that it's actually a greater liability than if we were to expand it to some additional individuals that we've listed for you there, making it so that individuals who are making purchases are using their own P cards that are assigned directly to them. Instead of, hypothetical being a common example, is somebody going to Anthony to use his P card to charge something when they're, they should have a P card on their own if they're authorized to use a P card to begin with. So this would alleviate this and it actually creates greater controls and is more secure. And I would note that, you know, Michael Fumiati, our purchasing agent, who oversees our P card operation in his previous life in New Haven, oversaw a program of over 50 P cards that have a million dollar limit and had no issues. So we're asking your consideration for this one as well.
I'll give my vote of support for this. It's dangerous to have it set up the way you have it now. It's not prudent, it's a fiduciary to have it like this. You don't want to have a shared card being moved around. It doesn't allow for certain stop controls. So I think it's, in today's environment, I mean, anyone up here that works for a corporate and probably has a corporate card in their pocket right now has to do expenses. And that's pretty typical in today's environment. I would certainly urge us to, to connect with the times and get this figured out.
I agree. No one should, no one should lend their P card out.
Never.
Ever. Because that's your responsibility because they have, it has your name on it. So, and that, and that's accountability.
As long as, I'll make the.
I just have one question. I'm looking at the list here and I see that, you know, we added, you know, David Perkins on there, which is fine. Also on our agenda, we're going to vote for a Assistant Director of Parks and Rec. Should that said individual also be added?
Probably shouldn't add it. It's a lot. That wouldn't be a bad idea.
Sure, yes. I think that's a good idea, yeah.
Well, there's, we can, we can just put the title and.
Right.
Right, because right now it has fire department, but no name on there. So we can put the assistant, add the Assistant Park Rec Director.
There's a limit to what you, what they can charge, or they have to let you know?
Sorry.
I think it's, it's. What's the limit where they have to let you know what they're spending? Is there a limit on these cards?
Oh, yeah. There is a cap on it.
There's a cap, there's a transaction cap, a dollar cap. But to your point, there's no going, you're saying getting.
But to your point, there's no going, you're saying get permission first before you charge?
Yes.
No. Michael, will you be the one giving the authorization of individuals that will have acceptance of a P-card?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll make a... Just one comment.
It's all based on their department. It comes out, each department's contract.
Right. I mean, there will be, not every department in Town Hall is on here.
Right.
So there will be times when someone uses my card, whether it's Lisa, Dave Ambrose was here, Chris, Chris is on there now. But there are several departments that don't have on this list. So to say that you're ever going to use my card is not a true statement. Well, is that something that we need to address, then? Should all departments have one available, and that Director of that department have it available?
We don't want a card that's a department card. You want a card...
To an individual. So we have, we have already set up kind of precedent to have Director and Assistant Director in each, in each department.
Right, and it should be, it should be made by those, by policy. If we have this expansion, by policy, we should be able to have it established that department heads are making those purchases, or those designated as either Department or Assistant Department Head.
So why don't we motion this as P-cards will be expanded to Director and Assistant Director and any individual stipulated by the Town Manager?
That's broad enough. I mean, it's...
Well, will there be daily limits, transaction limits, and monthly maximums? I mean, that's typical of a P-card.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, that's already in place right now, right? So we would fall underneath the, unless you change something, that's already in place.
Right, and we just changed over to US, US Bank, I think, from which you're aware of because of the, we're piggybacking on the state bid for the, for the P-cards. But the same policies we had in place under the prior cards, with J.P. Morgan Chase are in place now.
And the other thing that was discussed at Finance was that if there happens to be a purchase that goes over the limit, then they have to call to get permission.
For a one-time...
For a one-time.
Increase, yeah.
Right. So there are things in place.
And your stop controls.
And they have to reconcile monthly when they go through. When they get their statement and it goes to Finance and everything else, it has to be reconciled by that person that has the P-card.
Right.
So you, you'll have a, or either do, or you will have a policy for everybody to abide by.
Correct.
Right, because there will also be needed, like I mentioned in that subcommittee, probably an affidavit or a lost receipt. Usually you can get receipts nowadays, but sometimes you do lose a receipt and...
Right.
Yeah, there's a review process. All right, so I'll make the motion that we, Town Council authorizes the expansion of the P-card program to Director and Assistant Director and anyone afforded the ability by the Town Manager under the, stipulated under the current provisions of the program.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Zampiano. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you, appreciate, appreciate both those.
Okay. Next is approval of tax refunds.
Do you want me to read this?
Let's just, there's just one of them. I mean, you can just approve the tax, you can just make a motion.
Motion to approve tax refunds?
Second.
Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Abelson. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next is contingency appropriations.
Madam Mayor, there's actually two pieces to contingency appropriation. The larger being the implementation of the new contracts and the budgetary impacts those had on the various departments. You see on the attached sheets, based on settled contracts. The smaller item, there's also an email in the packet from Dennis Pennone, our IT, as you're, where we're in the middle of a fiber project, where we're going to string our own fiber from MBIS up to Stanley T. Williams. And one of the costs involved involves touching the telephone poles, make sure they have the proper gap of space. And what he's indicating in his email is that he's about $7,100 short on the PO that we issued initially, as some additional poles have been identified by either Frontier, Wallingford Electric, or UI that needed to be touched. So the second piece of contingency is the $7,100. And I did correct that other item to come off about the...
I got that, yes.
Do you say we're stringing our own wires?
We're running our own piece of fiber. Not, we're not, we hire somebody to do it. We're going to connect, so it become one campus all up Forest Road. So Public Works, the new police station, will all be on one network.
I doubt you said we're stringing it out.
That's why they're all sad. Well, yeah, no, I think it's...
And this project originally was funded with ARPA funds, correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
And this is, so, well, this, this was funded a while ago, but we're just getting to it now because there was a great leg getting Frontier and everyone else to agree to the whole pole thing. They dragged their feet, and now this is what we're left with.
So is this for the additional poles that haven't been counted, or is this for old poles that we couldn't, for the fiber on?
There were, again, there's, there's 187 poles with the original quote, need to be addressed. Again, Dennis is more the expert on this, but the bottom line is that they gave us an estimate of how many poles need to be replaced along this whole path.
That I remember.
And what I guess is happening is that the number of poles that they thought were not needing to be replaced may have increased, and more need to be increased.
Right, it says, it says here, since a lot of the poles are old and will need work to accommodate our fire, fiber, the fees are higher than anticipated.
Right.
So I don't think they, they're adding poles, it's just...
No, that was purely an estimate when they did this initially. Again, as the mayor said, it was probably, what, three, it was a while ago.
Yeah.
It was a while ago, so, yeah, yeah.
So they're not telephone poles?
No, they are.
Oh, I thought they're going to, well, are we buying them?
No, negative, negative.
Oh, I thought they were going to be North Branford poles.
No. Were you, there was the agreement that the, you guys passed, that was, there was three different ones. There was Frontier, there was Wallingford Electric, and there was Frontier, yeah. So there's poles along the road, some people own different ones. If it didn't have the right gap space for the, for the communication section...
So does additional work?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's, that's the small number, the 7,100. The other is...
The 201 is the wages.
Is the wages, which we knew about in last year's budget. And we just, we had the dollar in there because of the contracts that we were negotiating.
You are correct.
So do I have a motion to approve the contingency transfers?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Palladino. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. All right, and now the last item is financial report.
The financial report, as I mentioned in Finance, it's just kind of coming to be a broken record. It's unremarkable. The topics that I typically focus on, tax collection is 99.1% of budget this year, better than 97.6% last year. Overall revenue, 91.2%, better than 89.8% same time last year. And on the bottom, the expenditure side, you remember that expenditures have been lagging a little bit, and we're just about breaking even now with the same numbers as last year. The major department that's over is insurance, which we've kicked around, and that'll be transferred after April 1. That'll be on your April agenda, and then you can move money between departments per the charter after April 1. We'll cover that insurance shortfall at that point. Aside from that, the report's unremarkable.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Anthony on the financial? Okay. Did the, so now we're on citizen statements and petitions. Anyone? Nope. Okay, great. So now we're on executive session.
State, no, did you?
Oh, sorry.
Do you have one?
My name is William Delacamera, and I live in, on Old Post Road and operate Chickarelli's Farm, so don't take this as who I'm representing. And I just, I know you were talking earlier about the money that was lost through the USDA was like, was like $100 million. And I was a recipient of that grant that came back to, to the number of, between, it started at $150,000, and this year it's going to be $187,000 to make those food boxes, which I know on a, not weekly basis, but maybe bi-weekly basis, they come back to the town of North Branford. So it's going to put more undue pressure on the food bank than is already there, which is not good. I just wanted to say that the North Branford Food Bank, and you hadn't mentioned it, does support the farmers in North Branford. You know, every week Julius Marcarelli comes up to my farm and buys stuff to supply to our neighbors that are in need. So when you mention the monetary donations, just know that they're using them, you know, into the, to the local, local farm. So as you would, you know, you'd understand that that money not coming back to our state is a big, is a big issue. It'll be available to the grant I run under the LFPA till October this year, because that money was allocated. The school systems are going to lose their money, May, May 30th, I believe. There's no more money for local food procurement from schools. And to go back to that even further, that, the LFPA program was born in our town, on my farm, with Rosa DeLoro in '22. She went back and got this program made. So that you guys know that what's going on right now in DC started here in North Branford, okay? And what they're doing with this program is not right. It was something that was brought from North Branford because I did those food boxes during COVID. And it is a good program. And Rosa put it together to go to every state, no matter their size. And because it wasn't a congressional program, they grabbed it, because it was allocated money. So if anybody, if anybody feels the need that they want to, reach out to not our congressional, but people that are in the USDA or on farm committees in DC and tell them, we need this So I appreciate, you know, all you guys do for our town, and if you could do that for our farmers, the backup of the money, what it's going to do to us is the produce that we may sell from our, the other four towns, other four farms in town, that goes to the U, the food bank in Wallingford is now not going to go there, so it's going to cause a logjam in supply and demand. On a farm, we sell our stuff, but it's a race to the bottom, because the wholesalers want to pay us the least for it. So unfortunately, last year was the weather, but we already know going into this year it's going to be sales. And that's all I have to say. Thank you guys for what you do and the support you've given me over the past year.
Thank you.
I just, I'll talk to you. I just think it's so important now to help Rita. I mean, she's going to need help.
She's losing a lot of money.
Big help. Take some money out of your pocket and just hand it to her. She has put so much work, only to get slapped in the face because she, I don't know if this is true, are you correct, Ammar? I think she got some federal help, so you have to open up some other towns.
Well, because she's part of Connecticut Food Share.
Yeah.
We, we do have to...
So it's not just going to be her to get it.
Correct.
But don't hold that against her. This woman has tried everything, and if you can't give her a can of beans, go on the, you guys go on Amazon for everything. I know, I'm getting Amazon boxes every day. Make that money go towards the Amazon, write checks, do anything to help.
Because that's the best thing you can do now is, and Mike, thank you for writing that testimony for that bill that was a few weeks ago. If there's anything we can do, House Ag Appropriations Committee is G.T. Thompson, he's in Pennsylvania. Those are the people that have to be hit. The House Ag Committee people and the Senate Ag Committee people, USDA Secretary Brooke Rollins, you could pen something to her, but she was, she was the robber of the program. So if you would do that, it's...
Support you always.
Okay.
The woman worked so hard.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment? Okay. I need a motion to go into...
I have something.
Oh, okay.
I just want, I just want to clear the air. In our December meeting, the fire truck was brought up. I saw that in the Fire Commission notes that the tower was going to be put on the, on the block for sale, so just wanted to clear it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm making a motion to go into executive session under CGS 1-200C 6A personnel.
Do you have a second?
Second.
The motion has to indicate who's going to be in executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry. The motion will include Town Attorney, Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, Parks and Rec Director, I'm sorry, Assistant Parks and Rec Director in meetings.
Finance Director.
Finance Director. Who am I missing? I did, I did, Rory.
Yep.
I think that's it.
That's it.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.